June 17. I'll start again. Welcome, everybody, to the June 17 Town Council meeting. Let the record read that the entire Town Council, to include the mayor, are present. At this time, I'd like to inform the council and public that our dear friend John Castro lost his mother very recently. And I like, I'm asking for a moment of silence for B.B. Henderson Castro. Thank you very much, counsel. Now we'll do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America. All right. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
I guess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Mr. Vice President, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, but my internet conveniently just went slow at the start of the meeting, so just be on notice for that kindly.
Will do.
At this time, I ask, thank you, I ask, is there any, any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll move to the approval of the minutes of the May 20th public hearing.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the May 20th Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the ayes have it. And approval of the minutes of the June 7th work session. There are second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the ayes have it. Thank you. Next, we'll go to the Town Administrator's report. Holly, I think you have some exciting news for everybody.
Yes, thank you. So, so we are working on a reopening plan based on the governor's removal of the emergency order. And our, we've broken this into two phases. Phase one, we would expect to start July 1, and that would include Town Hall would open to the public during normal operating hours. We, we would be requiring masks of members of the public that are entering Town Hall. We expect to be able to have hybrid public meetings starting July 15 with the July Town Council meeting. And this would mean that we would have appointed and elected officials with the ability to meet in person in Town Hall with some distancing requirements in place. And we would have public access remaining virtual. We do expect to move into a phase two, hopefully by early September, September 1. And that would include all of the openings in phase one, as well as opening the town meetings to the public with some distancing requirements. And then at that time, we'll reevaluate our mask requirements and continue to follow the Health Department guidance.
Okay, thank you, Holly. The, the council, you've heard this and you've, you've read Holly's report. Starting with Derek, do we have any, any questions for Holly?
I, I don't have any questions. It's, it's good to hear that we have a phased-in approach to come back to Town Hall, so I'm excited to hear that. But I don't have any questions for Holly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Keith?
Yeah, thank you. I do have, I have one question on the, on the report and, and for item number A, I guess it is, or the Miller Loveless Park at Callum's Field. There's the results from a survey. I was just curious what the sample size was on that.
We had about 500 responses.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. That was what I was curious about. See how representative it was of the, of the town.
Thank you, Keith. Greg?
Yeah, Holly, I just regarding the, the Callum's Field there, I saw where the town was planning to release a new tab on the website. That sounds really interesting. And, and I guess as an aside, and, you know, I'm not going to have a report for Callum's, but we probably should probably try to get together for a short meeting, maybe on the phone. You know, regarding some of that stuff. Some point soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Larry?
Certainly good news about us beginning to open things back up again. And I had an earlier discussion via email. Some of the other things that'll be interesting to hear how the town's going to handle the reduced protocols for the water park and also Bayfront Park. So I'll look forward to hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
You know, questions, just very quick comment, you know, we, we, and by we, I mean you, as the town administrator, did such a good job in, in ushering through this, you know, pandemic, and I, I appreciate now we're, we're getting to reopening and I respect doing this in steps and look forward to, to being involved in any way we can. I think, I think it's, it's exciting and I, I know we're going to proceed with caution and it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And Valerie?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to also say, you know, I look forward to the opening and the phase approach seems prudent and practical. And I'd like to thank the town administration for all that they've done in the past, well, since a year ago March, and keeping the town running functioning, bunch functioning and it's a, it'll be nice to get back.
Thank you. Public Works report, we've, we've read Jay's report. We have any questions of Jay? I'll begin with Dr. Bodine.
Uh, not so much a question, but a thank you. I walked the trail a few days ago with a green tea member, a tree was done on the trail on the south side right near the end. We're across is a fishing creek. And it's already been removed. It was covering the trail. You couldn't get beyond it. So thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you.
Ready? And Charlie?
I have no questions for Jay.
And Larry?
A quick question, Jay, on emergency calls. It seems like we had 30-plus calls for power outages. Were those all water, weather-related or were there other causes?
There, there was one actual accident that they had south on 261. It was for a couple of them, but most, all of the other ones were exactly weather-related.
Thank you.
And, and Greg?
Sure. Good evening, Jay.
Good evening.
You know, I got to ask about the, where that fire hydrant was hit in Richfield Station. Where was that? Was that, was that the one there at the Richfield Lane?
Oh, no, no, that, that was actually the 10-inch water main leak. It's up, um, it was at the corner of Deer, Deerfield and Harrison, I believe, Greg. They, they just repaired it yesterday.
Oh, okay. And was that, I guess, was, did a car run up off the curb, onto the curb there and hit it?
Yeah, it had a pretty good rate at speed. Sent it down the road about 130 feet, so totaled the car.
Wow.
To be honest, lucky no one was hurt.
You got that right. Huh. Um, all right. The, I got a comment about the ball fields. I know that, you know, I've spent, had spent a lot of years on the HOA and cleaning up public facilities after people when there's plenty of trash cans around. It's kind of like asking people to not speed. You have speed limit signs. People are still going to speed. They're still going to throw cigarettes out the window. So just, you know, my comment is just clean up is sometimes a cost of being open. And that was it. I appreciate your time, Jay. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll say, like I say to everyone, it's 5% of the people who calls 95% of the problems. That's my comment. That's it.
Both, both your gentlemen's comments hit the nail on the right. Keith?
Yeah, no additional questions. Thank you.
And Derek?
Likewise for me. No additional comments. Thank you.
Sure.
Water Reclamation Treatment Plan Report. We've read John's report. John's not here. Please send any questions that you have to Holly and she'll be glad to work with John to answer those questions. Code Enforcement Report. We've read Connie's report. Do we have any questions of Connie? I'll begin with Derek.
No questions. I didn't know a lot of closed cases in, in one of the reports, so that's great to see. But no, great, great report as always, Connie.
No questions. Thank you.
And Greg?
No questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yep. Larry?
No questions, but hang in there, Connie. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie?
No questions for Connie.
And Larry?
Just, thank you, Connie. No questions.
I would like to just make a, a quick comment that I was out and about today for quite a while. And to any of the citizens that are listening, I just want to say that right now, the middle of June, Chesapeake Beach looks really good. Residents, keep it up. Looks great.
Well, and you know, I concur with your statement. It's funny, I saw my, my doctor down in Prince Frederick the other day. And as I was, the first thing he said, he said, I drive through town every morning on my way to work. He said, town looks good. I said, thank you, sir, you know? So yeah, you're, you're right. I believe Valerie's report, I mean, attorney order. Town Treasurer's Report, we have none from Dale, I believe. Next reporter plans for the council to have, you know, your full information on the American Relief Act and, you know, the, you know, the money's coming to the town, that sort of thing. So I look forward to the report, Dale. I look forward to receiving the money as well. So, so thank you. Town Engineers Report. We read Wayne's report. Do we have any questions? And I'll, I'll begin with Valerie. Is Wayne on the call, Holly?
Yes, yes, he is.
I'll begin with Valerie if you have any questions, Wayne.
Just, um, on the Richfield Tower, when is the painting actually going to start?
We have not received the schedule from the contractor yet. When we do, we'll let you know.
Sounds great. And then on the Highlands sewer studies, has there been any movement on that?
We have not received any feedback from the state on that. That's expected, I think, in July.
In July? Okay. And is that the same with the Wesley Stenit Water Study?
Yes, it is.
That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, any questions of Wayne?
No, I don't. No questions.
Thank you. Larry?
Two of my questions were already answered on the Highlands and the Wesley Stenit. One other question, though, if we have any update on the schedule for Beach Elementary School, the new one?
We approved the plans last week. I understand it's, of course, all, all in their hands at this point, public schools' hands at this point. They're expecting to bid it between now and the fall, and I expect, I think they said something about starting later this year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Yeah, just following up on that with Beach. I was staring at the construction plans last week. And it's really going to be spectacular. Um, that's going to be something for the county and all the residents, citizens. And to think it's happening here in Chesapeake Beach, that's great. They put a lot of thought into that. It was really intriguing, looking through the layout and the way that they've dedicated some space, special spaces. It's going to be a state-of-the-art elementary school and really lucky to have it in our hometown. Wayne, I had a question. It's this odd question here. The, the, the heading on your letterhead, it says Met, it says M and A Messick and Associates. But, um, the memo is addressed from Messick Group Incorporated, MGI. Why is that different?
Our official name is Messick Group Incorporated, trading as Messican Associates.
Okay, I got you. Trading as. A real quick question about the dredge spoils. Is there, um, I know we were doing some testing. We were trying to evaluate whether any of the spoils could be used somehow in raising some elevations or some sunken grades at the Callum's facility. Is that a chip sable on this batch? I know there was some testing going on.
Yeah, we did testing and we got through all the grains, grain size analysis and the sieve analysis and the water content. And we were waiting for pollutant levels. But given the fact that we now have to expedite the removal of the spoil materials to allow for the federal jet dredge, which is apparently coming some here in the near future, starting in September, October. We don't believe we'll have the timing will work out for us to use the current material on the field. The core is actually doing that testing on the material that's coming out, so we won't have to do that testing for the new material. So we would expect to use the future material that comes out this fall, potentially somewhere, somewhere in town and on fields.
Subject to testing.
Yeah, so we halted the testing, knowing we wouldn't be able to use this material.
Awesome. Um, just to kind of reiterate that, the, well, one thing here, the Highland Sewer Study and the Wesley Stenit Water Study seem, I guess at some point, or, or seem to be two different matters, but the Wesley Stenit Water Study, is that infrastructure, at least of the primary utility lines, is that necessary to get to the islands?
No, it's not. They're, they're different. The Highlands would be a sewer line. What, what's extended would be a water line. The intention would be, be to provide sewer to both Highlands and Wesley Stenit. But the Wesley Stenit Water Study was only for water.
Okay, we're still planning on extending that water out through the Highlands when we do that, when that work is done?
That would be sewer. Sewer goes to the Highlands and Wesley Stenit, and only water goes to Wesley Stenit.
Because I know we had discussions earlier on about whether the water made sense to extend water to the Highland area. What's the reasoning for not extending the water when the sewer is heading out that way?
The Highlands project was started as a result of the county's project for sewer for the community out there and their desire or need, if you will, to serve the entire community, part of which is in the county, part of which is in the town. So we looked at sewer only for the Highlands because that was the most appropriate need at that time. As you know, they have concerns. That's why there's, they're extending sewer. But the water was only looked at for Wesley Stenit. We did not look at, take me from.
And if I could just clarify, the Highlands is covered with water by the county.
Okay, that's right. They're not on well over there, are they, Holly?
No, they, they receive county water.
That makes a lot, okay. That's, that's great. All right, so, and then just again now, um, I know we all have some experience with dealing with the state on some things here, but this, the ball is, for the Highland Sewer Study and Wesley Stenit, the ball is in the, the state's court on both of those issues. We're waiting on them, right? There's nothing that we need to do. We're waiting, other than maybe get to the top of their stack.
That's correct. It's a part of, of a grant process which we submitted for both. We're waiting for their response.
Okay. Oh, last but not least, this Rod and Real Action item that's been on here a few months. Is there any status on receiving that information?
Yeah, there's actually been movement on that this week after I wrote that report. We're reviewing some new agreements up with them, which I have not had just to look at yet.
Will council be able to weigh in on any decisions that are being made on those agreements prior to them being ratified and executed?
Oh, yeah, let me answer that one.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
Oh, I may know. Go ahead, Holly.
Yeah, the Public Works Agreement has already been executed and Town Council has, has seen that. There, there's just some final pieces that, number one, the Public Works Agreement is likely going to have to be extended because the work is not complete yet. So we just have a couple of final details, but there's no rework of the entire Public Works Agreement.
Understood. We're making some adjustments. We can look forward to that soon, though. I, I guess, Holly?
Yes, yes, we'll make sure Town Council sees. There's one amendment with a, an island that they're going to be maintaining the plantings in, but we'll definitely make sure Town Council's aware.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, Wayne.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No additional questions. Appreciate it.
All righty. And Derek?
Yeah, just one quick one from me. In the heritage, there's reference to sidewalk construction. I just want to verify the sidewalk construction that's being referenced is within the community itself. There's no extension outside of the, the interior of the community. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Next is the deputies' report. I don't know if Joe or somebody's on the call, but we've read that the report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with the Council Vice President. Derek?
No, I don't have any questions, although it seemed like there was a unusual number of burglaries. I guess that might be attributed to the time of year, but no, no specific questions for the deputy, but thank you for everything you, you all do.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Who, how on the call? Is Joe on the call?
Sergeant Schrader, and I have Detective Buckler, the Beach Detective with us.
Thank you very much. Keith, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Morris?
Sure, I would certainly wanted to send out my thanks to, to those on the call and all of their colleagues who are serving a public service and be safe there. Richfield Station, actually right here near my house. I live in Woodland Court, if y'all know. It's the best place in Richfield Station. It's quiet. It's over on the side. People get down to our cul-de-sac. Sometimes they turn the wrong way. Because the, most of the traffic heads out, out down Sandsbury. And I would say about five nights ago, and I know that the deputies are aware of this. A stranger to the community was severely disoriented. And biked from, said he was looking for somebody. He clearly was in the wrong place. He was disoriented on something. He wasn't drunk, but he was on some kind of, he was hallucinating. And just walked into my neighbor's house on a flag lot. Just walked down the driveway. We keep our doors open and he just walked into the house. And there's knives and other things laying out on the counter. The reason I'm, and the deputies were very quick to come. Me and a couple neighbors got down there and we helped the individual sit down. And the deputies were real quick to get there. But I'm just bringing that up because I know we talk about locking vehicles. You know, I hate to talk about locking your front door, but folks, it's tough. You are taking a risk. I know when we've got our door open on the front, I got a screen door, which is probably illegal here in our community, but we put our lock on that. We've got a, a Neighborhood Watch meeting coming up later this month, and I know we're going to talk about a couple of these things. We want to keep, uh, we want to try to get the message out to the community that, you know, we're all getting out and we're, we're moving about. We've got to be cautious still, unfortunately. You know, and, and I'm so glad that nothing happened with that incident. But, um, you know, that was scary. That was alarming for us. So I'm not asking that you all to comment on that. I just wanted to make that, that, that comment to everybody here and anybody that's listening. Just do diligence, you know, lock your car doors, be vigilant on rainy nights, and, I mean, let's just try to look out for each other. And thank you for your service again.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And, and, and thank you, Greg. I appreciate those comments and I'm just going to interject with a little, you know, personal story of my own, you know? When I moved here in 1994, you know, I used to brag to my, my family back home. We lived in the big city, you know, I lived somewhere. I don't, we, we don't lock our front door. We don't lock our cars. It was 1994. By the year 2000, I was locked, we were locked. Because we, we needed to. And that was 20 years ago. So, as Councilman Morris said, for anybody who's on the call or anybody here, you know, locking your home doors, it's the same as locking your car. I mean, I don't know how many of you on the call will remember this, maybe, well, I know Valerie will. When we had the B Street Burglar down here, God, it was, it was a while ago. And the, the fellow, it was like a transient that was in town for like, you know, four weeks and at 5:00 in the morning, he was actually entering houses of people that might have unlocked their door before they started that their car. He was only stealing pocketbooks and I think one year he, he wiped everybody out of their, you know, Christmas presents. I mean, he wasn't a violent person, but the, the point was, somebody thought, oh, God, it's 5:00 in the morning. I, I, you know, I'll unlock my car before I go start my car and guess what, you know? So yes, thanks for bringing that up, Greg. Lock your home doors, you know? Larry, any comments?
Yeah, I just noticed in several categories, and I'll point out burglaries, firearms complaint, especially search warrants. There, there seemed to be a real uptick in reports in the month of May, and I'm wondering if that's a concern or if that's just increased patrols.
Firearms complaint, usually we get, we get those when people hear fireworks, things of that nature. Majority of them are not really fireworks. A loud bang, somebody's back car, or backfires, something to that effect. I would say probably about 98 to 99% of them are not firearms complaints. They're just firework complaints. But that's how the dispatcher puts them in and the deputy doesn't reclassify it when he clears the call for service. So it stays in the system as a firearms complaint, not a firework complaint.
But we're not seeing any kind of uptick in, no, thank you. Thank you.
You are.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up. I had asked earlier for clarification. The sort of string of events that happened on C Street, 8/707, 8/709, et cetera. I happen to have, I live very close there and I have some very good friends there. We're actually involved in that incident. And I'm wondering if you can give us any more information about the suspect that was apprehended, what the status of that case is, and I know there were two people at least on the scene. And, and this report says one suspect fled. Is there any update on possibly who that second suspect is or apprehending them? And I know you, you probably can't give a ton of information up, but anything you can give, I would appreciate if you were to pass on.
Yeah, absolutely. I have Detective Buckler with us. He, um, he's doing, helping with the investigation. So he'll be able to definitely speak a lot more in-depth on that if he wants to chime in and give you all whatever information he has in reference to that.
Yeah, absolutely. So basically, everything that happened on C Street was broken down to being two people involved. The one person was arrested that night. The second suspect did flee and there is a person of interest that we are looking into. But like you said, it's still obviously an ongoing investigation, so I can't give too much information. But through other investigative means, we were able to actually solve a multitude of other crimes that occurred throughout the county based off of that one arrest. And we believe there's a possibility they're also involved in the Lito's attempted break-in. But again, we're still waiting to hear from them, to get interviews done, to see if they are actually involved. And like I said, the two, the second suspect, we have an ID, but we're still working to pin it down. The one suspect who was arrested is actually getting indicted with more serious charges due to some of the information we learned in the days to follow during the investigation.
And I guess one other question. Can you share with us if they are Chesapeake Beach residents, the suspect and, and/or person of interest?
The one suspect, I believe, is not. The other one, I'm not sure on where he lives. But the one, I believe, has friends in the area because we've had cases with him in the past in Chesapeake Beach area, doing the same kind of thing, breaking into vehicles and that kind of stuff.
Okay, well, the last, thank you for your update. And the last thing I'll say is that the interaction I had with my neighbors, they had nothing but good things to say about the rapid response and the interaction they had with you folks. So thank you, as others have said. Thank you for your service. And I appreciate any update you can provide as this progresses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And Dr. Bodine?
Oh, yes, I just have one. I had a, a resident make a request. I was down on the boardwalk clipping vines. And he talked for me, talked to me a little bit about seeing if we could have, if possible, you know, patrol on like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, about 9:15 at night, 9:30. After, any sort of guests on the boardwalk ought to have left. And just to make sure that there's not, like, milling about on the boardwalk Friday, Saturday and Sunday evenings after 9:00. And I'm not talking about like joggers or dog walkers or those kind of folks, but folks that are more like Folks that are more like just hanging around, um, so I don't know if you can build that some way into your schedule. Especially for Friday, Saturday and Sunday, sometimes after nine, uh, just to zip down there and make sure everything's kind of, I'll say relatively quiet. If you could, that'd be great, and thank you.
Absolutely, if we can't, if we can't get to the whole boardwalk, at least we could do is, uh, walk down the steps and and walk, you know. Twenty feet, thirty feet, wherever each way, just to get part of it, because, you know, Friday and Saturday nights being busier than normal, at least we can get something in. A partial, uh, boardwalk patrol is better than a no boardwalk patrol, so we can definitely, uh, pick up the patrols in that area, absolutely.
And that's exactly where I'm thinking, is the walks down seventeenth and fourteenth street, just to make sure everything's quiet. Um, and again, obviously only if it fits into your schedule, 'cause I understand.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you Valerie, and, uh, a gentleman, thank you, but to echo my, my, my colleagues, uh, tha- thank you for your service, I appreciate that. North Beach Fire Department. Um, we've read the report, uh, if we have any questions, we can funnel them over to Larry. Mayor's report, um, let me just take some time here, I, um. Thought long and hard the past couple of days about, you know, a mayor's report, and there's just one thing that I want to report on that. Really supersedes anything else that I could really think of, in my opinion, um. We learned, you know, recently about the retirement of Doctor Mike Schistler from Beach Elementary, a, uh, you know, an icon here in the beach. After, uh, he, he taught, he was vice principal or principal at Beach Elementary for the last thirty-three years. Talked to Mike the other night, just to kind of sort of, you know. Say bye and thanks and all and all of that, and we're not done with him, by the way, and he and he knows that, but, um. You know, Doctor Schistler, um, actually had, you know, forty-three years of teaching before he retired every, entered the thirty-three year. To include, um. His two years in the Peace Corps where he was in Africa, he was teaching over there. And he, and he, and he told me an interesting story, he said, Pat, I want to tell you that that this story in passing, and I'm gonna, it'll probably be paraphrased a little bit, but this is why. I want to share this in my, in my mayor's report. He said when he was, uh, working for the Peace Corps over in Africa, um, one of his mentors over there. Said to him, said, don't stay over here on this continent, you know, uh, teaching, he said, go back home. You know, and grow in your backyard. So Mike was able to tell me, he said, after thirty-three years here, he he said, it looks like he did what he was advised. And he considered Chesapeake Beach to be his backyard, and it's where he wanted to grow. It's obviously our children, mine included, and, uh, I I just, you know, but Michael tell that better, I I'm sure, but it just, you know. Shows you what Mike thinks of his three-plus decades here in Chesapeake Beach, and those of us whose children went through beach. With, um, Valerie, did your daughter go to beach, I forget. Yeah, I know my Patrick went there for seven years, pre-KK and and one through five, and, um, just an extraordinary man. And I'm not sure in 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 the bigger picture, anybody has ever made a larger contribution to Chesapeake Beach and Doctor Mike Schistler. So that is my mayor's report, I I can't think anything else that would. Be on the level. So having said that, um.
To Mayor.
Planning and zoning. If if you will, I'm gonna leave it at that, if you have, well, you make a comment about Mike, I just assumed, you you do it on your own time, I don't know who chimed in, but. Yes, I'll let my words sit. Planning and zoning, Larry Brown. I don't know if Larry's on the call, may it not? If not, we'll move on to, uh.
Yeah, it just came off mute.
Yeah, I'm on the line if there are any questions about, uh, what we're working on.
Okay, um, I'll begin with, uh, Doctor Bodine, and maybe there is, maybe there isn't.
Uh, no real comment, Larry, I'd just like to, uh, once again, I listened, uh, to the planning and zoning meeting. You all are doing wonderful work, being really thorough, and, uh, it's really appreciated, and also I'd like to thank Chris. For the presentation that he gave at our work session, that was really helpful, awesome. So thank you for keeping us so informed about the progress as you go along, it's really helpful, and, uh, thank you. And thank to, thanks to all of you.
I'll pass that on.
Thank you Valerie, and 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 Charlie?
Now, I echo what Valerie said, this report, um, it's very clear and there aren't any follow-up questions, and I know you guys are. Really working hard, two meetings a month, appreciate it, thank you.
And Larry?
Uh, again, thank you for all the effort, I can't even begin to imagine the amount of time that everyone's putting into this, uh. The economic, I was gonna cover this under the Economic Development Committee, but this is probably a better place to cover it. EDC submitted some comments, uh, on the comprehensive plan. And, uh, spoke at the meeting last week, and I'll defer to Greg when it comes to him to expand on those comments. Or we can defer to the EDC report, whatever you'd like.
Thank you, and and Greg?
Uh, yeah, uh, no questions for Chairman Brown, thank you.
Thank you, and Keith?
Thank you, um, I don't have any questions, I'll just echo, uh, the, a lot of the sentiments already expressed and thanking, uh. Larry and and all the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for their hard work.
Thank you.
And Derek?
Yeah, for me, just an observation, uh, so I, I too, uh, viewed the, the most recent meeting today. And it really seems like your team is working very well together, uh, your, your agenda. By appearances, seems to be very well thought out and, uh, and developed, um, your, you know, the groups to discuss discussions. Are 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 well thought out and discussed, uh, very methodical review of the topics, so I commend you and and all your folks on that. Uh, you've really, uh, it's, again, by appearances, uh, you've really come together, were well as a, as a group and, uh, and working through this. Uh, pretty difficult process and in a timely manner, you know, the time that. We we kind of put you into a time crunch, but you guys are doing a great job, so. Again, just wanted to make that observation and and thank you and and the rest of the commissioners and and Chris for the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, um, and and thank you Chairman Brown. Word of appeals, no hearing held, uh, C-Box, we have read Mr. Bacon's report, climate change advisory group, Eric?
Uh, Mayor, I I did just want to point out, John Bacon is on the call, I I see him here, he's.
I'm here.
Yeah, John, you have a, I I'm sorry, John, um, do you have any words to add to your, uh, report, sir?
Well, it looks like school's gonna start in September, and that means that. Uh, we're gonna need some volunteers for the field trips, and I could use a couple of more. But, uh, we're getting ready to, uh, get the field trips ready to go, and just hoping that their school does restart in the, in the fall. And we're also collecting oysters, uh, for some testing, uh, from the reef. And some oysters that we had housed under the trail. And we're gonna be getting a whole lot of oysters on September the tenth, that's it.
Thank you, John. Yes, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you, John, can you, uh, tell us a little bit, what is the time commitment involved for a volunteer to help with the field trips?
Well, we are expecting there to be twenty-six field trips, like there was a couple of years ago before the COVID hit. And, uh, the timing is that, uh, the volunteers get there at eight o'clock and they leave about one thirty. And, uh, they up, what we do is we unload all of the equipment that the teachers would use. We help them set up, uh, then we monitor what's going on. And, uh, basically sit around for three hours, and then, uh, when it's all over with. We put all the stuff back in the storeroom, which is at the back of the town hall. So, we don't need people for twenty-six trips, but we need to have twenty-six trips. Covered, and it really requires about three members. Uh, per trip, so I'd like to have a couple of extra volunteers, so that we don't have to have. And the same three people come twenty-six times in the middle of the fall.
Alright, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for John as well.
Indeed.
So John, uh, again, great to see you here, uh, just a quick question, so. There's, there's one, in most cases, but maybe all cases, there's one fifth grade class that would have missed. This field trip, is is will there be an opportunity or working with any of the schools to not only. Host next year's fifth grade classes, but, uh, also what would be the sixth grade class? Or would there be any opportunities to catch some of the, the, uh, students who who would have missed it due to the pandemic?
I will talk with Tom Harton over at, uh, ChesPACs to see if that's a possibility. Remember that last year when they, they missed the trip? A group of teachers, a group, a small group of teachers came to the trail and had a field trip. Which was videotaped by the, by ChesPACs, and that was sent around to all the schools. And they used that as part of their in in classroom education, so they saw what went on, they just didn't get their hands on things.
Right.
I will talk with Tom and see what he has to say about that, it's probably not, because that requires a whole bunch more buses. And things like that, and the buses are a real problem with this school district.
Right, I understand logistics would be complicated, but, uh, you know, perhaps there's a, perhaps there's a solution there, so, thanks again, John.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, John, appreciate that, uh, Larry?
Yeah, thank you, Climate Change Advisory Group, uh, previously reported on this, but just a quick update. The town is going to be involved in a flood and sea level rise action plan study, the purpose is to identify and characterize nuisance flooding. And flooding from larger storm events, assess vulnerability of specific geographic areas in the town, recommend mitigation and adaptation options. And it's tailored to address sea level rise impacts and prepare, uh, implementation strategies. It will include opportunities for community input and comment. We are going to be working on this in conjunction with our neighbor, the town of North Beach, and it's undertaken by the University of Maryland Environmental Finance Center. And this effort is going to provide, uh, I believe valuable input into the ongoing update on the town's comprehensive plan. So the town just finalized an agreement on this study with Department of Natural Resources, uh, so we'll move on to the next phase and we'll keep you posted. And just a quick note, uh, you may have seen notice from the town of North Beach. Announcing they will be replacing decorative light poles throughout town with new LED fixtures. And just so everyone knows, uh, the town of Chesapeake Beach did a similar program a couple of years ago. Uh, finally, I'd just like to see if co-chair Keith Perdick has any additional comments, Keith?
Well, thank you Larry, you covered it, appreciate it.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you gentlemen, uh, EDC, Larry?
Yes, uh, participated in a regular meeting of the Calvert County Economic Development Advisory Commission on June ninth. The county is currently working on updates to the town center master plans for both Prince Frederick and Dunkirk. If you have any interest in seeing what's going on there or commenting on them, please go to the county website for additional information. Uh, the, um, Economic Development Advisory Commission is also working on a, uh, a strategic plan. For county activities and are provided comments on that plan. As I mentioned, under the, um. Planning and zoning commission, economic, uh, provided comments to planning and zoning on the updates to the comprehensive plan, I'll ask, uh. Co-chair Mr. Morris, if you want to provide any additional comments on that, Greg?
Um, nothing of specificity specificity there, Larry, I did have a question about the memo. I'd had a, we'd had some folks reach out to us regarding copies of the memo and. Just ED, I guess, just EDC's thoughts really, uh, regarding the plan and heading forward into twenty twenty-two. Um, is that, is that memo available anywhere?
I'm sure I can work with Holly and get it posted, it should, at this point, it is public information, it was discussed at an open meeting, so it's public information.
I'm pretty certain that is included on the planning commission's, uh, packet, be in their meeting minutes and.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's appropriate place for it there.
Yeah.
No, I I don't have anything to add to that, um, and if anybody wanted to take a look at that memo and see what EDC's thoughts regarding some of that stuff, you can. Um, it's available there with the meeting minutes, thank you.
Thank you, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, sir, uh, agreed, Steve, Valerie?
Oh, yeah, so a past event we had on June fifth, a bayfront park cleanup and vine clipping. If you're wondering what a vine clipping is, you know, vines will crawl up the trees and eventually kill them. And so from the pa- parking lot on down, we tried to clip those vines, so that eventually, regardless of how high they are, they'll die. And we didn't quite get as far as, you know, cleaning all of the trees on the boardwalk between the boardwalk. And, uh, the water, and so we went back another Monday morning and continued clipping, and I think we're gonna. Potentially try to continue doing that, um, until we cleaned out and sort of opened up all these trees along the bayfront. And then possibly move to those that are on the, on the railway trail. Um, it's not necessarily trimming the trees, it's trying to, uh, let them have a little light, uh, where the vines have taken over. Um, our next meeting is June twenty-fourth at seven PM, it's gonna be outdoors, it's gonna be at the pavilions next to the water park where the. Electric, uh, car charging stations are, so not the ones near the ball fields, but the other pavilions. I mean, that will be June twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. But we also did an inventory of, if you've walked the trail, you may have noticed that some of the signs have been weathered, and you can't actually read them. So working with, uh, John also for C-Box, um, we're gonna be replacing and ordering seventeen new signs to go along the trail. To replace those that are worn out, um, from really the sun and have cracked. Uh, so that's going on, um, we're still looking forward to, uh, getting more information and solidifying the September twenty-fifth. Paddle and pathway pickup, that'll be at Fish and Creek, and the idea here is that not only will we, of course, do a cleanup or we pick up litter. But if anyone wants to bring a kayak or canoe, we'll be supporting them using those kayaks and canoes for, uh, debris pickup along the creek also, so it's a. New collaborative collaborative effort with Calvert County Parks and American Northeast Community Center, so that's quite a, quite exciting and quite fun. Um, other than that, we're looking at how we can get water to the pollinator garden a little bit better than what is currently happening, so. Um, we'll just work and try to get that going, and that's basically all I have for this evening, so June twenty twenty-fourth, if you have any questions, just ask for that.
Thank you, Valerie, uh, Councilman Morris has indicated doesn't have a Kellum's revitalization, uh, for at this time. Twin Beach opioid abuse awareness coalition, Keith?
Thank you, Mayor, so we had a meeting, uh, June third, and primarily, we are still working on. An event, um, collaborating with. Various organizations at the county level on a Light Up the County Purple event, August thirty-first for International Overdose Awareness Day. Um, collaborating with CASA and the Calvert County Health Department, uh, primarily. I know they have sent out a letter to businesses in Calvert County and organizations inviting them to participate. I believe they have, uh, nine hundred light bulbs, uh, to distribute to businesses, we will be, um. Distributing light bulbs again this year in Chesapeake Beach and North Beach, and at, at Sneed's and Owings. Um, the last week primarily in, in, uh, July. And the, the county is also setting up a, a series of activities at the community centers involving the lock zone training. Prescription drug takeback and and maybe some also, um. Outreach, outreach events to go along with those presentations, um, more to come on that, um. In in addition to this, we're hoping to do a, a candlelight vigil, uh, at North Beach, we're still arranging that. On August thirty-first and and trying to arrange some speakers as well, uh, to talk now that things have opened up a bit. And, uh, so, you know, hopefully next month I'll have more on that, but again, that's for August. But again, that's for August 31st. And then of course, September is Recovery Awareness Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, global community advisory group.
I have a pretty limited report. I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, you, you were in and out there for a second. If I cut you off, I apologize. Certainly it's not intentional. So we are sort of on hold on, uh, working through some funding for the projects that we're looking at doing. I think in my last report, I discussed, uh, meeting that we had with, with the town administrator and Jay and talked about how we can begin to, um, not just focus on the things that are highest priority, but the things that we can also get funding to do. And just a lot of, a lot of that work is in progress. Things don't move, uh, fast and we, we know that. So not much else to report beyond that. I am, uh, in discussions now with our committee. We will likely postpone our meeting, which was set for Monday night. And I will, I will follow up with that to confirm. And we'll either reschedule a meeting, we're hoping to meet in person in, in the coming weeks or postpone until our, our normal next monthly meeting. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. No unfinished business, new business, council to consider the appointment of Teresa Frederick to the Board of Appeals. We have, we have met this wonderful volunteer. Um, is your, is your motion to approve from the council?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes, ayes? Thank you. Next council to consider the appointment of Peter Flaherty to the Ethics Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any ayes, ayes? Two new volunteers. I hope to know what they're in for. And thanks to both. Okay. Next Chesapeake Bay detachment, Navy Research Laboratory mitigation response and coordination by the town of Chesapeake Beach. I'll let Holly take, take the ball on this one. Let you lead off Holly. So.
Yes. Yours. Thank you. Um, so we, we do have on the present or the call this evening, Ryan Mayer, who's the remedial project manager for the Navy and he is leading the effort out at the Naval Research Laboratory CBD site. We also have Kevin Britt, who is the co-chair for the remediation advisory board. Both have joined us this evening. Ryan plans to provide just a brief overview of, of where they are with the mitigation response. And then following that, I will provide an update for the town's response to those actions. And Ryan, are you available to?
Yes, I'm right here. Hi. Well, good evening. Thank you, um, town council for giving me the opportunity to provide an update to the, uh, on our environmental restoration, restoration efforts at NRL CBD. As you know, we provided an update to the community during our, our last restoration advisory board meeting on, on May 18th. Uh, we went over the status of our environmental investigations. We provided our, our latest sampling, inspection, sampling of our site 10, our fire testing area, uh, where we have been investigating PFAS compounds. The slide presentations are available at our NRL CBD website that Holly has up on the screen there. Under our community tab also has our, our slides from that meeting, which will give you basically the latest, um, of all the sites that we're investigating at the moment. But also our latest sampling, uh, data that we, that we received. And I know we're still preparing the report for the site inspection, uh, report. We're, we received a number of questions during our RAB meeting, um, as one would expect. We have those captured in our meeting minutes and we'll have our meeting minutes posted shortly on this website uh, for folks. So folks that were not able to attend, uh, the RAB meeting will be able to probably get many of their questions answered. Folks who did attend, uh, we'll, we'll see, you know, in written format, uh, you know, how, how they were responded. So during the RAB, we presented the site inspection sampling results. The draft report is due out this summer. Uh, the final report is due out this fall, um, after regulatory review. At this site, based on the sample results, uh, input from our regulators, input from our RAB meeting. We are moving into the next phase of the circle of process. Uh, we call it the remedial investigation phase. We are scoping out additional sampling, uh, in each of the media, uh, where we sampled, uh, in the site inspection. We sampled for surface water sediment soil sampling. Uh, and so we're, we're moving forward with, with more sampling uh, to better determine these migration pathways. And at this stage, we'll also be looking at human health and ecological receptors, uh, in a, in a comprehensive way. The site inspection stage was mostly, you know, sampling specific media. We don't really look at the human health and ecological receptors at that stage. So that'll be the next thing we're going to focus on. From some of the, uh, environmental media that we sampled, especially the surface water sampling that we conducted. We're also looking into measures, uh, based on these site inspection findings. We're currently scoping out these now, um, and coordinating with our regulators. So we don't have any specific timelines for that. But some of these interim measures may require additional collection of, of information, um, and also more sampling. So. Our next RAB meeting is planned for October, uh, 2021. Um, and we'll provide more updates at that point. But at this point, I mean, the, the latest sampling results, um, are, are on our website. Were presented at our RAB meeting, uh, and we're moving forward, um, to the next stage in the process for that. But at the same time, we, we heard a lot from the community. Um, we're also getting, um, certainly a lot of feedback from our regulators on interim measures, uh, to take for the latest sample results. So. So with that, I'll turn that back over to Holly.
Holly, is it time for, for council questions or do we have any, any more input?
Uh, I can provide an update, uh, for town council on the town's actions if you'd like to before that.
Uh, yeah, I, I think the council is probably anxious to have any questions to Ryan to, uh, Ryan, I asked the council to, uh, to prepare any questions that they might have for you. And I'll begin with Dr. Bodine and take it from there. So.
Sure.
Do you have any questions of Ryan?
Yeah. So we need to talk about ecological receptor. Is that the central effect on the fisheries?
That's something we're going to look at. And you know, I think one of the challenges that, that, that we're going to have is just the, the sampling protocols for, for fisheries. I guess if that's your question. But that's something we're going to be looking at, at the remedial investigation phase. Absolutely.
That was my main question, Dr. Fisher.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
Uh, yeah, I don't have questions, just an overarching comment. Um, I, I have, I, I'm sure I'm not alone in this, but just received a boatload of comments from, uh, citizens interested and concerned in this. I feel like the steps that are, are being taken and the data that are presented are, are in line with what's appropriate. But I think if we're going to continue to hear from citizens, we're going to need to continue to, to do that. Um, so I look forward to, um, having more reports on this.
That's it. Thank you. Sure. Larry?
Um, I'm sure Holly was going to cover this in her comments, but I'll just jump the gun here and point out that the town has taken some additional steps on its own. We have tested the town water supply, which is in the very deep aqua aquifer showed absolutely non-detect PFAS substances. And we, the town will be undertaking some testing of the discharge from the water reclamation treatment plant. And I'd like to thank Ryan for joining the meeting and Kevin, I know you're out there someplace. Thank you for joining. I look forward to the next RAB meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, and Greg?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to thank town hall for arranging, um, to have Ryan here this evening. Ryan, thank you for coming tonight. Um, welcome back to Chesapeake Beach.
Thanks.
Um, I was on a RAB, the last RAB meeting. Um, and besides the official minutes, which probably still need to be approved by those RAB members before they're posted. Um, but is the video of the last RAB meeting available to the general public?
We, we didn't, um, uh, we're the, we're providing meeting minutes. We weren't really using a, a, a video. We were using the video really more for, just for our meeting minutes. Um, and we weren't posting, um, you know, the video back on, on our website. So.
Okay. So if the next RAB meeting is scheduled for October, that's when those men minutes will be approved?
No, 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 our meeting minutes, we'll, we're going to get those out probably by next week. We just got some feedback from, from Maryland on them. So, uh, we didn't get them until, I don't know, about a week ago. So it took a little while to put those together.
Does the RAB group need, does the RAB group need to approve those minutes?
Um, we'll send those out to the, to the RAB members before they're posted.
For comment or just for general information?
Well, if, if they want to comment on, we'll send them out for comment. That's not a problem.
Well, it seems we, y'all, that would seem to be the protocol. That's, that's what, uh, y'all had been doing. Anyway, um, so I do have some questions. Is it true that PFAS contamination is not contained to your site?
Well, we're looking at all the media at, at the site right now, um, between the ground. Let me just say as far as the groundwater, um, we've sampled onsite. I know the town has sampled their wells too. We've sampled onsite our wells. We've sampled, uh, in our deep aquifer for a production well. We've gotten no detections. We've sampled offsite in the north side and also on the southern side of the base, um, in the drinking water aquifer and, uh, over 42, um, wells that we sampled and 38 were non-detect. We did find some detections in three of the wells, um, which were well below the health advisory level. So, um, you know, the, the drinking water in that area is safe to drink. It's, it's safe on base, it's safe off base. Um, so.
I've seen that data. Um, I'm, I'm, my points, my questions are really directed more towards runoff than they are with, uh, the well waters. So.
And the surface, right. And the, the surface water results, we just, we just received those. Those were not in the, um, in the initial sampling that we did. So. And we do have some high levels. I'll be, I'll be honest with you. It, those, those levels, uh, those levels are high. And, and that's what we're looking at for as far as interim measures, um, so that we can bring down those levels.
Uh, I appreciate, appreciate your, you know, working together with you. I know that's a difficult position you have. You know, you're reading some of the news articles. I know that Department of Defense is trying to really make this a priority, not just here, but other locations around. Um, a second question for you, Ryan. Has the Navy confirmed PFAS is leaving the site via streams that are discharging to the bay?
Well, that seems to be the case, um, from the sampling that we have. Um, you know, we haven't sampled out all the way to the bay, but, um, certainly the, uh, the surface water results that we have, the levels, um, you know, would seem to indicate that.
And I think I remember from the RAB meeting that the Navy has, has no plans in the immediate future to test anything in the bay. They're working with their, the current protocols, um, outlined in the rap, I guess.
Well, no, in our next stage of the, uh, investigation, um, we, we will look at that. We're definitely going to do a lot more sampling, especially for surface water, uh, and see where these are coming from, um, and try and stop it is where we can. But and where we can't, um, to try and, um, to do some type of interim measure for that.
Awesome. Um, I appreciate your honesty in this stuff. I, you know, having, uh, been on the RAB, um, spending time following this over the past couple of years, I, I can't afford you any softball questions. So. My last question then, if you will, please. Have you confirmed west of the NRL site that PFAS contamination has not been detected in the areas draining to Fish and Creek? That's west of the NRL site.
Right, right. The west of there, uh, in a, in the, a lot of the superficial wells and the, and the deep wells, um, the, the levels really tail off very quickly on the western side. There's a number of wells in that area and, um, we've gotten a few non-detects. There are some, some levels there, but groundwater isn't flowing to the west side of the base. We are looking at this latest round of sampling, um, and, and see where we have some gaps in some of our data. So we do want to tighten that up a little bit.
Certainly not, we're not talking about groundwater and the well stuff there, just talking about runoff.
Right, right. We're not, I mean, right now we have the runoff towards the north end of the base and the, um, and the south and the southeast end of the base. That's where we sampled as far as the runoff. Are you talking about surface water?
Are you west of the NRL, of the NRL site? Have you can? Have you confirmed the PFAS contamination has not been detected in areas draining to Fish and Creek? Now that's just to the west side. You didn't include the west. That was one reason I asked that question, you know, when you had talked about, uh, you talked about north.
Right. We're, we're, we're looking at all the creeks, uh, on the base and, um, in near the base. So we're going to take, we're taking a, a new assessment of that. So what we have sampled already is on the north. Uh, where our two ponds are on the north and the south, in the south part of the, the bay. So we sampled the just upstream of those ponds, um, and downstream, um, close to the fence line of the base.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you for your responses. No further questions from me. Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and Keith?
Um, Greg, I really appreciate your in-depth questions there. Um, I have no additional questions for Ryan. Thank you for, uh, being here tonight. And I also just want to, uh, thank the administration for being so proactive on, on keeping the town appraised and doing the testing. So it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Keith. Derek?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Ryan. And you mentioned the circle process, uh, briefly before. And for those who, who aren't familiar with the circle process, it's a very deliberate and time consuming process to evaluate a, a site like this, uh, where stakeholder involvement and communication really is, is paramount. And just as important as the sampling and, and everything else that goes on. So, uh, appreciate you being here today. And, and I'm sure I speak for the mayor and that we invite you back as, as often as needed to share updates if you have them. Cause we, we certainly have a, uh, a residential population who's very interested in, in this topic. You know, you, we are very close, as you know, and, and, and some of our areas border, uh, well practically border, uh, the, the north end of the site. So, uh, please come back. Uh, please, you know, keep us updated and, and thank you for, uh, posting your information on the website. It's going to be very useful and, and I agree. Thank you to mayor and our administrator for staying on top of this, keeping the messaging uh, up to date and plentiful, uh, that this is going to be a, a long-term issue. And the more that we all work together, uh, the better it's going to be for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, and thank you, Ryan. And, and Holly, you said you, you, you have something that you might want to just share as well?
Sure. Uh, just briefly, uh, we, we discussed this during the work session. Um, and I just wanted to give an update in terms of how the town is responding to this information. Um, again, as, as Councilman Jorski had stated, our town's drinking water has come back with no traces. Um, however, we'll continue to monitor that moving forward. Um, we've also added in some additional voluntary testing, um, at the town level. We are coordinating with MDE on, on sampling of other items, uh, to include oysters uh, within our, our reef that we have. We're going to use some older oysters and some younger oysters and have a comparison. We're working on that currently. Um, bayfront park waters, uh, were tested actually at the creek and along the beachfront. Jay Berry coordinated for that to be taken care of and the water was collected on June 8th and we should have the results here soon. Um, we're also working to test our water reclamation treatment plant effluent. Uh, John Castro has already taken action on that and we hope to hear something, uh, late, late this month, early next month. And, and again, just the continual monitoring of our drinking water.
Thank you, Holly. Appreciate that. And once again, Ryan, it all, appreciate you coming in so we could, um, you know, ask questions and, and, and in a public forum like this, it's very important. And, uh, thank you, council for the compliments to the town administration. I know, I know they're, they're all staying on top of this. Next, council to consider a contract in the amount of $248,245 on a per yard. on a per yard load and per linear feet basis, according to the RFP, to Beltway Paving Company Inc. for for general paving services. Funding for these services will come from the FY21 Highway User Revenue Fund received by the town. The remaining funds for FY21 will be held for the FY22 projects. Is there a motion to approve?
Leave to approve with comment?
Indeed.
Second?
Second.
For comment, I'll begin with Derek. Do you have any?
No comments, no additional comments from my comments at the work session. I would like to also just keep in mind that there are other projects where our highway user revenues can be used. And if we can accomplish what the priorities here and still have some for other projects, that would be great. Thank you. I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I hit the keys, while I'm thinking about it, just a shout out to the late Senator Miller for, for, for pushing so hard to increase the amount of highway, highway user, you know, revenues that come into our town. Can't ever thank him enough. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to add on this tonight.
All right, Mr. Morris?
Yeah, just a quick comment. It's this for Jay really. Obviously, I'm in support of the award on the Beltway Paving Company. I've known Tim Moore and that group over there for a long time. And I know that they do great work. They're good folks, but they are the company that that did the crack. I believe they're the company that did the crack, not the crack chasing, but the seal with the with the tar wand that they go around. And, you know, some of that's quality control for their own project manager. You know, a drunk person could have done a better job than some of that stuff I'd seen that last time that they came through. And again, you know, nothing's perfect and we aim high. You know, we, we should expect them to do a quality control checks on these kinds of things and not leave it up for us, Jay and taxpayer money to find. I know that Jay has a component in this now regarding testing and some inspections. That certainly helped. And that's wise to get us, get an engineer seal on a hook of the approval. But, you know, expecting a lot from a company's project manager to make sure they're on top of quality control. So there are obvious things that the town has, that the town finds and brings to their attention. That's all. And I'm in support of, of course. So thank you.
Larry, Charlie, Reverie, any comments on this?
No additional comments.
Right. Okay. Thank you for, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Thank you. Next, council to consider awarding a contract to S.J. Johnson in the amount of $16,990 from the Water Park Capital Improvement FY22 budgeted funds to replace with the Water Park Hot Water Heater. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okay, next we'll go to, do we have any public comment at this time? Hearing none, I'll move to the council lightning round. I'll begin with Dr. Bodine.
Oh, yeah. I also saw Mike Sisler this week. And I cannot imagine retiring after thirty three years with the impact that he has had. And the story that I will tell is that Dr. Sisler greeted each child every day with a handshake as they walked into the building. And he greeted them not just with a handshake, but with their name. He didn't just know their name, he knew their parents' name. So if you were to multiply that out, the thousands upon thousands of people that he knew the child's name and their parents' name and greeted them both on school property in the morning and then throughout the community. Is amazing and he's deserving of all the recognition that we could give him. We've been blessed to have Mike Sisler be our principal at our elementary school for over three decades. We are lucky.
Thank you, Valerie. Charlie?
I wanted to echo two things that I had made notes about over the past month. One is the large number of folks who I have heard from regarding the the NRL rab and the PFAS issue. So I really appreciate what the town's doing and I hope that that this will go a long way to satisfying those folks and that they're engaged. And if they're not, they still have questions, they reach out to us and let us know. And the second item is just another compliment to the sheriff's office, but I have talked at length to the neighbors on C Street. Apparently it was quite a dramatic incident. It was not something as simple as someone breaking into a car in the middle of the night when no one was home. The, the owners of the home, of two homes actually engaged with the folks who were involved, you know, for, for lack of a better term, eyeball to eyeball. And that is disconcerting, but I, I am very happy the sheriff, the sheriff's office has has been as responsive as they have, and I hope that we are able to, to bring this to a successful closure. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Wanted to share Valerie's comments on Dr. Schistler. I did not, do not know him as well as Valerie and Irish do. But what contact I've had with them, I've always been very impressed with them. And I know it's not up to the town, but I'm hoping maybe the county will consider some kind of naming as part of the new beach elementary, maybe one of the ball fields or something like that. I hope they would consider that. And then I'll just conclude with wishing everyone a happy first day of summer on Monday. Enjoy the almost fifteen hours of daylight that we'll have on Monday and happy July fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Councilman Morris?
Yes, sir. There's been a lot of disappointment in the community regarding the canceling of the fireworks and you know, that's really just getting on the tail end of COVID here. What we hope is the tail end. But I know there was some talk about a September event or an October event. I know that if we're able to do something safely, that we'll do it. And I know it'd go a long way with some, some residents. And, and I think it would help especially towards the end of this year or heading into 2022, really kind of get us on a track pointed north with special events again. I wanted to follow up well behind Mayor Mahoney's comments and others regarding Mike Schistler. And I'll try to keep it brief. Everybody knows how I feel about him. The town dedicated equipment to him a couple of years ago. There's some talk about a resolution or some proclamation for him. I'll tell you, the quote's going to keep him warmer than that other piece of paper will. Not to diminish that, but and to steal a councilwoman's idea and kind of evolve it just a bit here. It seems like it would be appropriate for this town and that we would have unanimous here with council and the mayor. Maybe sending a letter to the Board of Education requesting or recommending or both that the school be dedicated to Dr. Mike Schistler. I know that these schools, when they bid these things, they have plaques and dedication things that are all worked into the, the, the cost and the signage packages. But it seemed like it would be appropriate for us to do that. And if the Board of Education or whoever has the power to influence that, if that happens, wow. You know, that's almost an ultimate thing right there for him. But even if they don't. This, this, this body bringing that to the Board of Education is fabulous testament for Dr. Schistler. You know, we certainly can't say enough. If you only met him briefly, you certainly don't know him. It really took almost all of six years, plus with my kids being in there to know him and really fully understand what the town has there and what the kids have had. We've been blessed, you know, that the county cycles the principals around. That's their policy. And Mike knows somebody somewhere and he's been planted there and he's one of the best if, and I, I don't know all the principals and they're all fabulous individuals. But in my book, Doc, Dr. Mike Schistler could be one of the best principals this county's ever had. So on that, I would say good night to everybody and looking forward to having in-person meetings when we can safely do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. I too wanted to just offer my congratulations to Mike Schistler on his retirement. I think that's been great, great suggestions and I would fully support, you know, sending a letter to the, to the Calver County Board of Education recommending that. The other thing I was thinking on a smaller scale is if the town, as part of the Kellums Field, wanted to do a pavilion with chess tables in honor of Dr. Schistler and all the work he's done with chess and the kids. Someplace where people can go and play, play a little game of chess there underneath the pavilion. Be kind of a neat thing. You know, Dr. Schistler, very busy man. Both my kids went to Beach Elementary. And when we started the opioid overdose awareness group last term, I had reached out to Dr. Schistler to see if he would participate and, and help us connect with the families of the kids, you know, who went there, who may be suffering. And, you know, he's such a giving person with everything else he was doing. He joined right in and really helped us connect to the Calver County Public School System and we were able to advertise out through them. So a great thing. So we'll miss him definitely. And then finally, I just want to wish everybody a happy Juneteenth. Our new, our new holiday here. So y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, Keith. And Derek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I can't say anymore or anything better than what I've heard from my colleagues regarding Dr. Schistler. So I echo everything that they've said and some really fantastic suggestions, which I, I'm sure we can, can make some of those happen for sure. I too look forward to seeing you all perhaps next month, early next month in the same room. That'd be nice. And as Larry said, start a summer. So I wish everyone a safe and happy summer and enjoy the outdoors and everything our beautiful town has to offer. As Connie said, the town does look great. So thank you for everyone who's done that. And, and thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, council. So I wanted to conclude the light round. Of Dr. Schistler, I just had an idea about to Sharon with, with some of your ideas. You don't got to do it now, brainstorm it, sleep on it, do it Monday, you know. With, with just some ideas that you have and we'll, we'll compile them and, you know, figure out what's best. Good idea if y'all just shoot her an email when you get time about stuff you're thinking about and a way for us to honor him or stuff to do, like we heard this evening. So if you could just take some time next couple of days and do that, that would be great. And thank you. And lastly, well, next to last. You've all probably noticed, if you looked at your screen, that Todd Pounds is not on the call tonight. We found out about an hour before the, the meetings start that Todd had a very serious family emergency issue, you know, going on. I, I just asked that you, you know, most importantly, that if you have time, you know, say a prayer for Todd's family. That's, that's what's most important. And the issue that we had at hand, we will take up in two and a half weeks at the July sixth work session. That's really all I want to say on that. So, so having said that, the meeting is over. It's time to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Good evening, everybody.
No executive session, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Explain. All right.
Good night, Chesapeake Beach.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Good night.